Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, February 4th, 2019. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda, and we have some additions to the agenda under New Business. Item number four, the Public Works Committee met later in the week and before the agenda was sent to the newspaper, and so we have these additions. Public Works is looking to purchase a telescopic boom lift at $75,042. They would like to purchase an electric crane to mount on a one-ton flatbed at $16,322. Also would like to have authorization to expend $3,500 to the Koochin County Highway Department in sharing the cost of a scanner, plotter, printer. And then lastly, they recommend not placing a traffic control sign at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Fifth Street. And then item number five is an addition, and that's to renew the Frontier Services Agreement for a three-year service term for the phone system software assurance support at a prepaid cost of $508.12. Your pleasure with the agenda and the additions. Motion by Counselor Kraus to approve the agenda with the additions, and second by Counselor Droba. This, oh, excuse me, Deech, my hearing has got to get better over there. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Deech has seconded the motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Discussion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Move to the minutes, and the first set of minutes that we have this evening is from the Friday, January 18th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Your pleasure with those minutes. I guess, would we want to take all three? I guess, I don't know any reason that we can't take all three unless someone has an objection.
I move on all three. We'll second.
Motion by Counselor Kraus, second by Counselor Buller, to approve the minutes from the Friday, January 18th Committee of the Whole Meeting, the Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting, and the Thursday, January 24th Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Council. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and minutes are approved. Thank you. Move to the payment of claims and transfers. We have one transfer, and that's to the Fund Number 101, the General Fund, from the Lodging and Tax Fund, and that's $321.88 to be transferred. We have accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls at $225,209.70. Airport Commission regular claims of $89,832.11. Airport Commission Terminal Project Phase One, Phase Two, excuse me, $436,908.81. And then Runway Reconstruction Project Phase Two, $87,490. And Library Board claims of $1,711.13. Your pleasure with the resolution to approve the transfer and the payment of claims.
Make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Deech to approve the resolution and approving the transfers and the payment of claims.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted, approving the transfers and the payment of claims. Thank you. For the audience, is anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council on any items that are not on the agenda? Hearing none, there is another opportunity at the close of the meeting for that also. We'll move to the consent agenda, and that includes one renewal for a restaurant license, and that's by Tim Hortons at Second Avenue and Seventeenth Street. Your pleasure with that consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Droba.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Approve the consent agenda. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved, including the license renewal for Tim Hortons. Thank you. Move to New Business. Item number one is to approve staff assistance in the use of city beach for a triathlon event at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, August 10, 2019. Ashley and Aaron, you want to come forth? Please, up to the table.
I think everyone has a copy of the package we put together. We were taking over the triathlon that was previously done by Bacchus in the years past, so there was not a triathlon last year, and then we wanted to take it back over this year. There's a slight change to the bike path. We take it up Gold Shores and make it a little longer, but other than that, everything was pretty much the same.
And so this would be approval of the use of the city beach as a starting point for the swim, for the bicycling event, and the running event.
Correct.
You have already made contacts with the Sheriff's Department and the City Public Works?
Yep. Sheriff Hedlin approved the bike path. We changed it a couple times, so we've been through it a couple times with him. So we talked about the volunteers, and we would meet with him later as it got closer to just address the needs of exactly what the volunteers need to do throughout their route.
Have the necessary insurance already?
We do. We gave that to the city last Thursday.
Good. Thank you. Questions by the council?
I think it's a good thing that you're doing it. It's nice to see it back.
Council has a motion then to approve the use of city beach for that triathlon?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Kraus, second by Counselor Buller, to approve the use of city beach for the triathlon event on August 10, 2019. Discussion or further discussion? Please.
I would just like to say, you know, there's things that we have in our community, and Bacchus had ran this for a couple of years. For whatever reason, they made the choice to no longer do it, and sometimes we always look, well, somebody should do that. Obviously, it was such a great event, people should be doing it. And I love the fact that we have a local business that said, somebody should do it, and not only should it be someone, we're going to do it, and we're going to take it on, and we need to have more people in our community that see things and needs in our community, and instead of waiting for somebody else to do it, stepping up to the plate and doing it. So thank you guys so much for bringing something back to our community that people loved and enjoyed, so I really appreciate that.
Further discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Approval of the use of city beach is given. Thank you, Ashley and Aaron, for stepping forward and keeping this going.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks. See you August 10th.
Yeah, I got my team going. We're three for three now. I'm just not going to do the swimming because if I fail at that, I drown.
Thank you.
See ya.
Thank you. Item number two under New Business is the resolution approving the master partnership contract with the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation. Your pleasure with that contract.
Can we get a little background information on this?
Yeah, I can, if you would. Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Council, if I may. This is a contract that was prepared by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. It's one that we have adopted in past years. This particular contract extends through 2022, I believe the date was, and it's to allow MINDOT staff and city staff work in a partnership agreement to do certain work orders on projects that need to be undertaken for general maintenance. So the contract lays all that out. I did exchange phone calls this morning with a representative of MINDOT. They just had a few typos in here I wanted to address with them, and they're fine if those are just crossed off in handwriting and initialled, but so the contract would, or the resolution that you have before you would authorize the mayor and myself to sign off on the agreement. It also authorizes the city engineer to serve as the project manager essentially for the contract, as well as the public works director for the city, which is Gary Skalman, and they are authorized to expend a certain amount of monies to move forward with these various work order contracts. The exhibit, or the agreement that's prepared right now limits the maximum amount over the course of the year to $100,000. So the public works director has requested that the city council approve the draft resolution that would allow us to enter into this agreement with MINDOT through 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Droba to approve the resolution and the master partnership contract, and second by Counselor Buller. Discussion. Questions with regard to the contract or the resolution?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Counselor Kraus.
Administrator Anderson, is that $100,000 over the course of the contract through 2022, or is that every year?
I believe it was annual. Look at it, it's towards the, I saw it in there. Yeah, I think it was annual.
On page nine, fifteen, 15.1, is that the? I think also on page six, thirteen, seven point two.
That's the reference that I was referring to, that state's maximum obligation would be total compensation be paid by the state to the local government under all the work order contracts will not exceed $100,000. It doesn't say annually, so that would be over the course of the agreement. Appears on the state fiscal year end, which is June 30th of 2022, to the calendar year of 2022.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none here, we'll call the question on the resolution.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried. Resolution adopted, approving the master partnership contract with MINDOT. Item number three is the approve the purchase of two, 2019 and 2020 police interceptor SUVs for a total fee not to exceed $72,000 based on the state bid pricing and payable from the Police Department Capitol lot lay. Chief Maston.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. I've put together information in your packet in regards to the purchase of vehicles for the 2019 year. Typically, we go with the Ford Explorer, which is a very good vehicle for us, but is very popular, and Ford cut off the building of the 2019 early, early to late fall, apparently, so we were unable to order 2019. I think that's a little bit of a dilemma. Now we have to order 2020. We can't get that until the dealer says probably August, so I'll save late August, September timeframe most likely. That caused us somewhat of a problem, so that's why we're also looking at the Tahoe. Both vehicles are comparatively priced. I was a little surprised this year to see the price of the vehicles, there is an increase, more so than I had anticipated, more so than the dealerships had anticipated. In the process, I put out requests for bids, and I, the state bid price for the vehicles, and the state bid price is the lowest price available to us, therefore, that we make those purchases from Ranger Chevrolet in Hibbing and Ford.
Question? No, I assume our local dealerships had a chance to bid on this also?
Absolutely.
All right.
Matter of fact, last year, we went through the same process, and we opted, or the council opted, to stay with the local dealership, although it was slightly, the price was slightly higher, but still comparable, but neither of our local dealers at the end submitted bids.
It's council's pleasure with the approval of the purchase.
Motion?
We have a motion by Counselor Deech, second by Counselor Kraus, to purchase a 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe from Ranger Chevrolet in Hibbing at a price of $36,929.78, and a 2020 Ford SUV from Ford of Hibbing. It's all-wheel-drive at $34,502. Further questions or discussion? Counselor Droba.
If we're not going to get the Ford SUV until late this year, would it make sense to hold off on getting that one and trying to get a second bid, or another bid later and see if the price changes, or are we scared that it'll go up?
I'm not necessarily afraid that the price will go up. There's an overwhelming number of orders for these vehicles. The 2019 model, Ford had accepted so many orders that they kicked back 200 in the state of Minnesota. So now with the retooling for the 2020, I don't really know when we're going to get the vehicles. I know we can get a Tahoe relatively quickly, and the longer we continue to put miles on these vehicles, the more mechanical problems we're going to have. So the sooner we can replace one and wait for the other, I think is probably the best move.
Years, the two that we're replacing?
2000, well, we'll determine at that time which ones are best to put up for auction, whichever ones have the most miles on them. We've got vehicles ranging from 14 to 17.
And if this is state bid, it won't change. That's a state bid for the year.
Right, that's a bid price.
It won't change.
No.
Enough. And Chief Maston, the putting in the order now for the Ford SUV assures us that we will be, we will secure delivery?
We certainly hope so.
Okay.
The other 200 that got kicked back, we're assured they were going to get them as well, but yeah, I'm quite confident that 2020 will be just fine. We'll get our order in as soon as they begin accepting them, and I'm not exactly sure when that is. It's relatively soon. I think is when we can actually secure the, or they'll retool and start to build, so...
Very good. Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and approval is given for the purchase of two police interceptors. Vehicles, thank you. Move to item number four, which is the addition to the agenda, and includes the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendations. Counselor Buller and Droba and myself were in attendance, along with members of the Public Works Department and the city administrator. And our recommendation, item number one, is the purchase of a telescopic boom lift. It's a 2019 Model 460SJ from United Rentals at a quote of $75,042.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Droba to approve the purchase.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Questions or discussion? None, question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried, and the purchase quote is approved. Thank you. Item B, under the committee's recommendation, is the purchase of a lift more electric crane to be mounted on an existing one-ton flatbed truck, and this is being purchased from Burt's Truck Equipment of Moorhead at the low quote price of $16,322.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
By Counselor Deech to approve the purchase of the crane at the cost of $16,322. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, place the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and the purchase of the crane is approved. Item C, under the committee's recommendation, is to authorize the expenditure of $3,500 payable to the Koochin County Highway Department for their purchase of a scanner, plotter, printer to be shared by the county and city, payable from the street water and sewer department's automation line item. Council's pleasure.
So moved with the stipulation that we get trained on the equipment so that we're, our staff is able to use it without county approval or assistance. That's the word I was looking for.
Here we have a motion by Counselor Droba to authorize the expenditure, and second by Counselor Buller. Questions or discussion? And that is contingent on the city employees being trained to use the scanner, plotter, printer so that we don't have to wait for county employees to do the work.
And for the other two counselors, that was the conversation that happened at the Public Works meeting, is we currently use that equipment over there right now, but we need to get the assistance of the county, and sometimes it can be a while before we're able to access the equipment, and if we're kicking in some money towards it, we hope that we'd be able to be trained on it and be able to utilize it at our leisure.
Makes sense.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, place the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and the expenditure of $3,500 is approved. Thank you. Item D, Counselor Kraus asked the committee to consider traffic control at the intersection of Sixth, Fifth Street and Sixth Avenue, and the committee reviewed the issues there, parking, and the administrator secured input from the street commissioner and the police chief, and with that information, the committee has made a recommendation not to place any type of traffic controls at that intersection. No action is necessary on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, would you, discussion?
Yes, I was notified by a constituent that lives on the corner of that intersection. He was actually looking at a traffic, traffic accident that happened that day, and just noted that there was a lot of accidents on that avenue. I agree with the committee's recommendation that committees are for, so I will note that Sixth Avenue is controlled on, by at least one direction of flow on Third Street, Fourth Street, Sixth Street, Seventh Street, and Eleventh Street, but not Fifth Street. So I'm just noting that there's a lot of control on that avenue, on, it goes two streets, no control, two more streets are controlled, and then three more down, it's controlled again. So there's a lot of control, but it just feels that that's, it may be a spot. I know Chief Maston's had, or Chief Maston had said that the numbers don't indicate that that's potentially a problem, but we'll monitor it to see if it becomes one, so I agree.
Chief Maston, please.
Yeah, you know, Counselor Kraus, I would agree with you that, and your constituent, there is, we do see increased traffic at that intersection now with the expansion of TrueStar. We've got the funeral home, we have the church, there seems to be a lot of traffic, and they're parking more so than driving. We haven't seen an increase in traffic accidents there. Doesn't mean traffic control signs are, you know, not a positive thing. I'm certainly in favor of that. But from when we started our new record system in April to the date of this question, I counted we had 92 traffic accidents in the city, and four of which occurred at that intersection. A lot of our traffic accidents are intersection-related, a lot of uncontrolled intersections, particularly now with the roads are slippery, we're seeing crashes every day. I would say personally in regards to Sixth Street and Seventh Street having control, traffic control, Eleventh Street, Fourth Street, those are much heavier traveled roads or streets, those are like main avenues or streets that run from one end of town to the other, so we see a lot more traffic on Sixth, Seventh, Eleventh, and Fourth than we do typically on Fifth Street.
Please, Counselor Kraus.
And again, I agree. I just wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring it up, so thank you.
Further questions or discussion with regard to that issue? None, thank you. We will move to item number five, and that's to renew the Frontier Services Agreement for a three-year service term for the phone system software assurance support at a total prepaid cost of $508.12. Your pleasure with that agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Droba to approve the agreement.
Second.
Second by Counselor Deech. Questions or discussion on the motion or the agreement? Seeing and hearing none, should I replace the question?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, and I would be voting yes, so that is approved. Thank you. Any other new business to come before the council?
I have a couple of concerns. From what I understand, the men's garden club is folding. Is the city cooperating in that? Are they involved in the gardening projects that the men's club used to do?
I believe that we may have purchased the flowers, if I remember correctly, on the...
When they do planting?
Yes, they do the planting and the watering and taking care of the weeds.
What about this summer? Would it be possible to put or assign some of the students that work for the city to take over their, the garden club's duties of weeding and watering and some stuff like that? I would hate to see those go away. They're beautiful.
Yes, yeah, we have a couple of gardens, I know, especially on the west end, on Eleventh Street and... Street and Highway 71. They've done some great work there. And then I believe also in front of the high school, that one.
Right. I believe the city, the city council should look into this, being involved in it or having somebody involved in it. This is just one of the things that beautify our city.
Please, Counselor Kraus.
Counselor Deitch, the Koochin Men's Garden Club came to us, I believe in October, our committee at the whole meetings, and what was going on. If I remember correctly, I think there's some 35 flower boxes along with other, the two garden, the gardens on either end of Eleventh Street and then some, the garden, the boxes downtown. It's my understanding that at some point we were going to have a conversation as we were looking at beautification and blight and other things and see if we can't come up with a solution. That was one of the things that was kind of passed on that this council inherited. I think further discussion at some point would be, would be warranted, but they did come and make it known that they were going to be disbanding.
I think this is something we have to pursue and follow up on, on what you're saying. And if it's not going to work out, find a method that will.
I think the, if I may, the, there's several groups, there's one that purchases the planters that are hung throughout the community. Those are watered regularly by the city. Then there's another group of ladies that take care of some of the concrete flower boxes that are placed throughout the downtown area. And then we have the, this work that's been done by the men's garden club. And the planters or the, the hanging baskets, I think there's a, contributions are made by the business owners to have those. Believe in the other cases, we purchased the, the flowers for both the concrete boxes and the men's garden club. So I think certainly something that I guess Public Works could, could take and have it referred there for further research. Counselor Droba?
Well, I, I agree with, with all the statements that have been made. If I remember correctly, when they, when the men's garden club came and spoke to the committee of the whole, one of the concerns was, we're not getting as many young people applying for the positions in the summer as it is, and there's more work than what we have students that, to do the work right now. And the other thing is what was the planting of, of the gardens, the students wouldn't be out of school at the time that the gardens would be planted. So that was one of the issues that we had. I, I do think that it's something we can look at, at Public Works, but I think this is going to be more than a monumental challenge because the men's garden club for the past five years have been looking for groups and organizations and young people to become involved and try to take over some of this stuff. And it's exactly what those two ladies came and talked about today, taking over the, taking over the merit or the triathlon. Everyone in the community sees that somebody should be doing it. And sometimes if it's important to you, I think we need to look at ourselves as if this is important to our community and it's important to me. I think we should be trying to find people that are interested in that because...
Even if we had something like sentenced to serve, I don't know if that's something that can be done or not since it's county, sentenced to serve, have them go in and clean those gardens out, weed them, that was what I'm talking about. Weed them and even if the city could come by like they do downtown on the hanging plants and spray them once in a while, that's fine. I, I think if we think outside the box, this can be taken care of and we can do this.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Sentenced to serve is a great idea. And I think that right now the sentenced to serve is doing almost exclusively waste and garbage pickup and those kinds of things. And what would be required is we would need somebody to supervise them doing, you know, to get two or three at a time to go out and do it and we'd need somebody to supervise while they're doing it. But, but I think it certainly would work well and I will run it by the current supervisor of the sentenced to serve and see his thoughts, see if it's something that he personally could supervise or would we need to have somebody else do it. I'm just not sure how much of his time is being allocated, if he's looking for additional projects to take on or not. But I'll follow up on that and I'll report back at the next council.
Thank you. Okay, second item that I have concern, I brought this up last time and Joe talked a little bit about it also, and that's our business blight. What I would like to see, and I, I don't know if it can be done right away, but very soon, I would like to see letters sent out to at least three of our businesses or closed businesses, there's one that's still in operation, about cleaning up their blight. If we start this now when the winter's here, hopefully when the spring hits, they'll start moving on it. And I don't know if you want me to mention the three businesses I have in mind or, or not.
It might be well to, I guess we got to determine if, if the city should be sending out that letter or...
Whoever's in charge of blight, sending it out. Our business blight, as I said before, is terrible.
I think, I think it might be well to refer them to the housing and building inspectors to, to take a look at that and, because really I think the letter should come from them. I mean, the city council can certainly send a letter if we desire. That's, that's not a problem, but...
I guess to me, it doesn't matter who the letter comes from, just so we get this ball rolling.
I think we have somebody in charge already that we should have the letter come from them.
Mayor?
Please.
I might just suggest that Counselor Deitch and I just visit after the council meeting. I can find out what properties he's concerned about and there may be letters that have already been distributed by staff. If there isn't, we can, we can look at them and document what kind of violations of our code there might be and then send appropriate letters.
Okay.
As I say, we got to do something and if letters do not do the trick, as I said before, I would like to see it progressifying.
All right, so meet with the city administrator and take it up in that direction.
Thank you.
Further, Counselor Deitch? Further?
Yes.
Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. And maybe under the same vein, Counselor, have you heard anything from the courts as to when the dates for the five properties that the city is seeking to, to clean up?
I was going to bring it up during my report, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, thank you.
But I can do it now. And as you may know, Judge Aduke has been off for several different medical issues and he's now back and we expect that he'll be back full-time without interruption now. So we're in the process of setting hearing dates for those, but I'm confident that by the time weather permits, probably in May or so, for the city crews to get going on that, we should be authorized to do so.
Good, thank you.
I have one thing. This is the best city council ever. We have all kinds of stuff under any other business. This is great. One of the things Counselor Deitch had brought up at one of our committee of the whole meeting was the sound quality in here. And I know that Ted Saxon and Jim Young had came up here and looked at it. And I spoke with them this last week and I asked if they had an idea of what the cost was. And they said that what would make the most sense for them is if we actually gave a scope of work of what we were actually looking for, because they said they could give us the lowest quote in the world or the highest depending on, you know, we, we haven't really given them any official guidance of what the scope of work would be. And to, for me, my thought is, I think it would be great to have all the audio video and being able to have, you know, a screen and all that stuff. But the reality is, is I think the most important thing is just to be able to have the sound quality on the video be fixed. And so I don't know if we would need a motion to send out a RFP or if we're legitimately looking to find a, a solution to the audio problem for our council meetings on, on KCTV. But that, that is where it is right now, is it's kind of had to stand still because they don't know really what we're asking for because we officially never asked. He just heard that there was a problem and he wanted to come try to fix it.
Counselor Droba, I think the issue is twofold. I think one, we probably need a stronger sound system in here, but I think what we're expecting is that little camera that's back in the corner there to have the ability to pick up that sound. And I'm not sure at the distance it is, if our sound system isn't strong enough or if that camera doesn't have a good sound system pickup. So I think it's twofold there. But I think we should probably, if we're going to have a request for proposals, we should have some kind of a specification that we expect to...
Absolutely.
Have for the system here.
What does the sanitary district use? They must have a system that's workable.
The...
That's KCTV themselves.
Yeah, KCTV has several speakers that they place in the room there. It's a much smaller room, so I think that, but they have, they have several microphones that are picking up the sound much better. And I don't, I don't know if this camera has the ability to have, if there's a jack on it to be able to, to have an additional microphone on it. I just don't know the, we need you that equipment.
Well, then maybe that's what we look at, is just a recording device that can record the sound with quality. I mean, that, that's maybe what we're looking for in an RFP.
Please, Counselor Kraus.
Administrator Anderson, is there funds in the budget for such an RFP if we were to pursue it or where are we sitting there?
Mayor, council, we have budgeted money specifically for that project and as Counselor Droba has pointed out, those two gentlemen did stop by informally the day after the council meeting, I set up a time for them to come in and we talked about it. And I, I laid out some of the work that was considered in the past, which it did include video cameras and monitors and a screen to try and make whatever presentations were transpiring more visible for the audience in the room as well as the TV audience. We didn't pursue that because of costs and other reasons in the past. We did apply for grant funds and were not funded. So we had a general conversation about that and, and my understanding was is they were going to analyze some options and then come back to us with a proposal about potentially what we could do. So it sounds like from what Counselor Droba has found out is that they probably need a more defined scope of work and what we're really looking for. And, you know, I think it's clear to me based on this conversation today is what you're looking for. And I think we can, I have to say writing a scope of work or an RFP for something without having detailed specification scoped on that would be difficult for anybody here. But I think if we can lay things out in, in general terms so that they could respond, we can look at, you know, what's good, better, best kind of equipment and consider that based on cost and ask them to do that.
Counselor Droba, please.
And to add, add to what Counselor Kraus had just said, last year, if we remember, we were awarded $75,000 grant from the Blanden Foundation to the Koochin Technology Initiative. And that $75,000 can go to work to try to build a better community through technology. And maybe this would be something that we would be able to put in grant funds for. It is, and I, I don't know, I, I am sitting on that committee, the Koochin Technology Initiative. But one of the things that they're funding is technology and education. And I think that the education of our community of what we're doing at this table, because we know where they're, they're watching, we know they're listening because they're coming to us saying that the sound quality is horrible. So I, I think it is something that we may be able to utilize through that $75,000. Not saying it would be all of it, but we would have to know what the cost is going to be before we could even attempt to try to leverage some of those funds.
Speak directly into that microphone, we can't hear you on the TV. We're waiting to talk to somebody in the audience, we can't hear you. Somebody's in the audience, which is really important if you're looking at doing something different. A lot of people don't want to be on camera, but if there's somebody in the audience speaking to you, I'll look up there and you look like you're gazing. If you guys speak directly into those microphones, it's sounding...
Because it goes through that, that speaker right there and that's loud enough to get the camera to catch it. Yeah.
So where are we going with the, are you going to just bring it up at the Technology Initiative?
I think we would have to have an RFP of some sort of, of what scope of work we would want. And I think in the most simplistic terms, we would want to have a camera that has audio that the, picks up everything in the room. I mean, I think that's the easiest way to say it. We need a camera with audio that picks up the sound in the room.
Recommendation, I will be...
Fair enough. We would need to have an RFP for technology, for someone to do that. So I would make the motion to have an RFP for a camera system and audio that would better serve the television community to watch our council meetings.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Droba to place a RFP for a camera system and sound system to better serve the KCTV. Second by Counselor Deitch. Further questions or discussion? Counselor Kraus.
I think at this point, it makes sense to just see what's out there and see what's available. And we're not really putting ourselves in a position where we have to act on it, so it doesn't cost us anything to ask. So I think this is a really good idea.
Counselor Buller, please.
I think it was a good idea from Administrator Anderson also that we get the low, medium, and high, so we have different areas that we know, you know, as far as costs go. So if we want to go with the lowest cost, what'll it do for us? The medium, you know, so we've got an idea of different ones rather than just come up with just one.
Given that we haven't all of these, given that we haven't budgeted any monies, I think that, you know, it's something that we can certainly continue to study or we can maybe see if we can secure some, some grant funds for that. All right, enough discussion? I will then place the question.
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. The motion is carried and the city administrator will be seeking requests for proposals on a camera system and sound system. Thank you. Further under new business. Hearing none, we'll go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City administrator.
Mr. Mayor, I have two things. One is the, we had visited at the Public Works Committee level with Brian Larson and actually more maybe even at a staff level with Brian Larson, who's a project manager for the Highway 53 reconstruction project. We were hoping to set up a meeting with him to have a committee of the whole meeting of the city council to discuss the municipal consent process that we need to go through as part of that project. We discovered that some of you are not going to be present on the two dates that he was available, which was the 27th and the 28th of February. I did confirm with him today that he is available on March 4th, which is the first regular city council meeting in March. It's Monday at 1:30, so he would be available to be here. It's Monday at 1:30, so he would be available to be here. So if all of the council can be present, I'd probably like to confirm that date and that time to meet with Brian Larson here as a committee of the whole before the city council meeting at 4:30. Everybody?
Monday, March 4th at 1:30, and then we have our regular city council meeting at 4:30. We'll be with the MINDOT engineer, project engineer, Brian Larson, to discuss the Highway 53 project.
Would be instead of the 27th?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
All right, have a consensus to do that, so thank you.
And then the second item is just informational. We've had some conversation about the pay system that we've been operating under in the past, and the Fair Labor Standards Act requires that we pay overtime for ambulance personnel, and that would include EMTs and paramedics anytime that they work over 40 hours, which is different than what our contract language is. And because we're aware that that's a, does not comport with federal law and standards, I've instructed our staff to start paying overtime for all hours, over 40 hours effective on January 21st, which is the payroll that we're processing now for a payment that will be paid next Tuesday. So I'm just advising the council of that. And as you know, we've reviewed this issue, and we'll have hopefully meetings fairly soon about follow-up from our last committee of the whole meeting in this discussion, and then other issues in terms of schedules and operations in the ambulance department.
Questions for the city administrator? Thank you. Welcome back, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to welcome to the council the new counselors, Deech and Buller. And I apologize for missing the last two meetings. I was over in Maui trying to work and encourage some tourism to International Falls, and sitting around the pool talking with some people about icebox days, and the air had 135, and I had some young, interested people, until we hit 40 below. Then the interest waned a little bit, but-
You're a great ambassador.
I was trying, so I'll go back again next year and see if I can convince them again.
Is there going to be expenses on that?
No, there's no, I cover those expenses on my own.
Sounds like a rough gig.
It's a tough job, but somebody needs to do it, so. But welcome to the council, look forward to working with you, and that's all. I have been working with Administrator Anderson and also Kelly Myers on the blight issues and moving forward these situations that we identified before you came on the council that we're seeking approval to correct. I do also just want to take the opportunity, I reviewed Chief Mastin's annual report of the police department, and I just want to put this plug in. We have a great police department, and the chief does a wonderful job. I should be proud of the quality of services they perform, and I work with them on a daily basis, and we're really fortunate. And Chief Mastin and staff, because they do great work with limited resources. Years ago, when all this budget crunch came on, well, it's probably 10 or 12 years ago now, and some consolidation there, and doing the same job with a little bit more limited resources.
That's a great segue into Chief Mastin's report, annual report, please.
Thank you very much for that, appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I've included the packet this evening. I have my January report in there, which basically outlines activities. The statistics for the month of January are also included in there, is the annual report that I hope some of you have had an opportunity to review. Every month I come in and sit down and go over the statistics, what we've done, how many contacts we've had and whatnot with our officers in the police department. I think a lot of times we get too caught up on statistics, and so this is an opportunity for me to kind of give you a snapshot of your police department, where we are, and hopefully, you know, where we plan to go. And it covers everything from our staffing, where our current staffing levels are. It touches a little bit on some of the advanced training that we've had, that our officers have participated in, above and beyond the post-mandated trainings. There's a lot of reasons for that. Some of the trainings are to bring instructors into our department for trainings that we need, which eliminates the necessity to send officers out of town on some of these trainings. So we're building teachers, so to say, you know. We've got officers that are going to leadership school. We're continuing to increase their education and help them to evolve. Because as you think of things, I think it's, we've got an obligation for, not necessarily a succession plan, but we've got an obligation to our employees to help them along in their career, to bring them up and to plan for the future. So, you know, in my opinion, these are steps in building the future leaders of our department. Very important. When I came on as chief, I said that community engagement, community policing, and things of that nature were very important to me, and our department has bought into that, thankfully. I'm very pleased with that. Our community engagement continues to be successful. I'd like to see more events, but I think we're doing very well, from small events of fishing with kids to the national night out, to the increase, which I mentioned here in our Dare program. Our officers are seen more in the community, they're more active. I think that that gives our citizens a sense that they're more approachable. And that ties in with our technology, you know, the council assisted us and backed us in this new records management system that we have. We've got computers in our squad cars. They've been in squad cars, you know, everywhere for many years, but we're finally, we're caught up to that now, and that's been a fabulous tool. Our officers have immediate information they need. Also find, you may be driving around and find a patrol car parked on whatever random street for some time. Oh, they're probably completing a police report right there. But they're visual, they're not in the office that way. It's more time in the street, it's more visibility, which I think is a great tool. Start talking about some statistics. 2017 and 2018, I've outlined those. Therefore, you'll see an increase in the reports that we've generated, in our calls for service, in our traffic enforcement. You'll see a general increase. It's been no secret to anybody that knows me, since I've been an officer here, I take a hard line on drugs. We continue our effort against drug enforcement in the community. Because of the backing of the council, we've obviously partnered with the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force, and I feel that we've got a year under our belt with that, and it's been a good move. With that said, looking at some of our drug work that we've done in the past year, you know, we had over 30 operations, we've seen a 45 increase, 45% increase in the amount of methamphetamine seized here in our community. A much larger amount of marijuana was seized as well, so, and a lot of, which comes down to a lot of money street value, right? So we'll continue that, we'll continue that push on this. We've got the community engagement over here, we continue the push on the drugs over here. And at the same time, what does that do? It brings down other crimes. So if you look at a lot of, you can attribute to a lot of your property crimes, i.e. vehicle tamperings, burglaries, thefts, things of that nature, you can attribute a lot of that to addiction, you know, with drugs and things of that nature, that drives a lot of that. So now, I looked at the last 36 months. It'll be three years, I'll be in my position this summer, so I took a snapshot, say, the past 36 months. And during that timeframe, I've noticed that we've seen a small decrease in crimes against a person, and I kind of categorize those myself, and that's with assaults, sexual assaults, domestics, and other miscellaneous persons crimes. We've seen a small decrease in that of 2.5%, nothing substantial. But where we see the big decrease right now is we've seen a 15.5% decrease in property crimes in the last 36 months. I attribute that to the hard work and the effort that's being put in on the streets, the alert neighbors, the communication with technology, people talking to us on Facebook, the Crime Stoppers, the TIPS, everybody working together. So it's nice to look at that and realize that we're not really pushing a rock up the hill, like I feel like we are every day. We're actually gaining some ground, so I'm pretty pleased with that. Our department, since I was fortunate enough to be put in this position, has done everything that I've asked them to, and I couldn't be more happy with that. With that, you know, we've seen some statistics that have increased over that timeframe. So in that same timeframe, we've increased our cases, our new cases, by 18 and 1/2%. We've increased our traffic enforcement efforts in the community by 70%. That's substantial. And during the same time period, we've experienced a 39.5% increase in our general calls for service. So our calls for service have gone up, but at the same time, we're enforcing more traffic laws, we're educating more motorists, our officers are more visible, and it's working. So moving forward, we just hope to, you know, we hope to continue that drive and that mission of community engagement, community involvement. I'm hoping maybe we could have some sort of a town hall. Maybe I could put a parking ticket topic up, and I'd get some guests. You know, so we'll keep that going, we'll continue our enforcement efforts, educational presentations in the school, and yeah, just keep going. But I think it's important for you guys to see, it's easy to see what you put into the police department, because we take a big piece of the pie when it comes to budget time. But it's nice for you to see what you get out of it as well, so that's what I hope this does for you.
Thank you, Chief. It's a great report, and even small percentage decreases in crime are well noted. I think that is excellent. Certainly, one of the items that I really want to draw attention to is on the list of training items. It's the last item, and it's the de-escalation strategies for persons with mental illness or behavioral disorders. That kind of training, I think, is really paramount today, and we're seeing so many issues around the country, and to have our officers well-trained in that de-escalation, I think, is going to pay dividends. So thank you for that. Also, again, want to bring to Officer Ellsbury for her work with the Dare program. Those pay, I think, dividends for many, many years to come. And to our counselor for your work with the drug court and then drug enforcement. I think that two of those are probably exactly what you said, are bringing down some of these other crimes, because folks are not out there trying to break in or cause burglaries or whatever else to aid their drug abuse. Further questions or points by the council? Counsel Drowe, please.
So I was looking at what you're looking forward to in 2019, and you said that you're continuing to drive to bring a police blotter online? Can you tell me?
My goals, yes, I'd like to do that. You know, so when I come in here and I report we've had whatever number of, whatever we've had, that's really not a good explanation of what we do. And local media reports, does some reporting, you know, but I've also, I've noticed with some other agencies, they'll put a newsletter out, maybe it's monthly or it's quarterly, and some sort of information that details the activity for a period. Really gives people a better picture of what we're doing, you know, a little more detail, names and whatnot, but I'd like to push that information out a little bit more.
So is that one of the things that you're looking at for more community engagement? Because, number one, I just got to tell you, I completely agree. When you went into this position, one of the things that you said that really struck me was you want the officers to be on the street and get to know people, because if you know, if people know who the officers are, they're more likely to call, and I bought in hook, line, and sinker. So what, and I love all the community engagement that we've been doing, what are you looking at for more community engagement in the future?
We hit these peaks and valleys with it, you know, so I'd like to see a little more consistency, so maybe copy with a cop. I am encouraging, I feel encouraged thinking about some sort of town hall things when a hot topic maybe comes up. There's a lot of, with, as you all know, with Facebook and technology, social media, there's a lot of back and forth about what's going on, and I think that it would probably be beneficial to have those conversations face-to-face if possible. Not necessarily more, just continue the consistency. We've seen a little bit of a decrease in our presentations. I really like the presentations when officers go out when they're requested. We've done presentations at Woodland, we've done presentations in the schools, we've done presentations in Canada, we've been all over the place, you know. And, you know, I'm sure those will come back around, but just that engagement, being there, answering those questions that people have, and as far as the blotter or whatever we call it goes, I like people to be able to click on something and say, well, this is what my department, my police department has done for the last week. They're a little bit busier than they were, you know. Just a little transparency, let them know what's going on in the community. I'd eventually like to see some sort of a public safety survey on our city website so we get feedback from our customers as to how they feel we're doing. So those are goals, things that I'd like to see happen, but I've said it two years in a row, I haven't got there yet.
Well, and one of the things that you pointed out, people are talking on Facebook, you know, and obviously, and the thing of it is, is I would guess, all of the conversations are correct, but 30% of the information is. You know, I mean, when people have to fill gaps, information goes out and it's not correct, like parking tickets specifically. Well, the city needs money. Well, that's not why we're giving out parking tickets. You know, I mean, and I think that having that forum of a town hall or whatever it is on whatever topic would be very beneficial for the community. I greatly appreciate what you're doing in your department, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Drowe. Further?
You know, I'd like to add that, you know, back in September, when you guys had that de-escalation training, I had an opportunity to attend that training. And I have to say that I think it's paying dividends, especially in my non-council job, I see that, you know, working side-by-side with the officers, that those that had the training, and there's been other trainings that your officers have attended through us. I think it's great what you guys are doing, and I think, I'm starting to hear more positive about the police force than negative in the community, just in the people that I deal with. And the more positive interactions I think you have with people in crisis specifically, the more apt they are to utilize you again.
I believe that the more positive conversations, the more positive context that we have with our citizens, the more they're going to stand behind us when something goes wrong. So we need that partnership, yeah.
Would something like, if you look in the Daily Journal, Minneapolis Tribune, they have an article, I don't know if it's twice a week or once a week, it's called Ask a Trooper. Now, would something like that work for the city police?
Sure, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, you just need one question and then answer it like Ask a Trooper does.
No problem with that. Might have to give us a minute so we can research to get everything correct.
I mean, that would get a little more information out to the people.
All those, anything like that, I think, is a beneficial idea, yeah.
Very good. Further questions or discussion? I would just like to close this by thanking you for, I think, the investment that we've made in the drug enforcement has been very, very good. I like the training that both the officers and yourself are participating in, and the cooperation with the other law enforcement agencies in our area. I think all of that has just been very, very positive, Chief. Thank you. Well, the department heads here, we'll go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
I would just like to ask, we had talked about at the last committee of the whole meeting, having a committee of the whole to discuss some goals and one-year, two-year goals, and I was just wondering if the mayor or administrator have looked at a date on that?
We haven't yet, and I think there's just been a number of others, and I know how-
But it's important to me.
I know it's important to you, and certainly you got it on my list of things to take up, but I know-
I just don't want to give you the-
We've got the League of Minnesota Cities Legislature, legislation, and visit to the legislature. I'm going to St. Paul this week, and it's just been, just been a full calendar here with the core weather and visitors also.
I will keep bringing it up until we have the meeting.
All right, fair enough.
Good deal.
I would like to add your places- I would like to, at your place, there's three pieces of information. The League of Minnesota Cities has a league-sponsored bill with authorized local sales taxes. I didn't realize there was 20 cities that are seeking legislative approval for local sales tax. I thought there was only a half a dozen, and here, they've listed now 20 of them, I believe is the number.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? So that, there's going to be a lot of, a lot for the tax committees of the House and the Senate to hear, and some of those just may be challenged, you never know. Secondly, in the Minneapolis Tribune, they had a opinion page, and it included that they had met with the chancellor and the chair of the Board of Trustees of the Minnesota State, or what was known as Minskew, and just that the opinion included Rainy River Community College, there's a term there, but what was somewhat bothering was the, that the closing or shrinking of campuses is never a popular topic with legislators whose district include those schools. It may not be the best option for Minnesota State, but it was encouraging to hear that they're committed to charting the best course for those institutions, so hopefully that's not going to come about. Lastly, at your place, there's a page for Spencer Igoe, is the congressman Pete Stobbers, who's the new congressman for the 8th District, and his northern representative is going to be here visiting with the county board tomorrow morning, and schedule a meeting with Ken and I. And this is the list of items that we intend to bring to his attention, and if there's others that you'd like to have added to that, we would be pleased to include those. So just wanted to bring those to your attention also. And I don't think there was anything under the mayor's report. I think the Arrowhead 135 race went very, very well. Certainly brought a lot of, also a lot of notoriety to the community. Further to come before the council? Questions? Anyone in the audience? Any questions? Three none? Stand adjourned? Thank you. Next meeting is on Tuesday, February 19th, because of President's Day. Thank you.